Sorry, we're a little late today starting. We usually start right on time at 7:00. Good evening, everybody. The City of Peabody's zoning board of appeals meets tonight in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 40A, and other applicable laws. Tonight's hearing will be conducted in the following manner. The secretary will read the legal notice or state that such notice has been waived. All applications tonight will be heard in the order they were received in the city clerk's office or as otherwise designated by the chair. The petitioner or petitioners' representative will present the subject application to the board. The chair may limit the length of all remarks. All parties in interest will be given an opportunity to speak either in favor or in opposition to a pending application, and the board may receive similar written communications to be placed on the public record. I'll explain that a little bit now to the few people that are here this evening. So when I'm done speaking and giving you a little bit of the ground rules, the secretary will read the first and in order the petitions. And those are your applications. At that time, when he's done reading, you come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and then tell us why you're here. If your contractor is here, or your attorney is here, and they're speaking in your behalf, then they'll do the same thing. Please don't tell us what you do for a living. We're all very happy with our jobs. We don't really want to know how long you've lived in the city. You're here for dimensional relief. So we want to know what you're building, why you want to build it, a few of the reasons. Be as clear and concise as possible. At that point, the board will ask some questions, if we have any. And then I open it up to the audience. And I say, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor? So if you have a neighbor or neighbors that would come up to the podium, state their name and address, and tell us what wonderful neighbors you are and why you want to build whatever it is, and it's not going to interfere with anything, and it's going to make your property look whatever it is, that's fine. Then I say, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? And here's where it gets a little tricky. Although tonight, there doesn't seem to be a full audience, so it won't be too tricky this evening. So if you're in opposition to whatever your neighbor is planning to build, you come up to the podium, and you state your name and address for the record, and you give us clear and concise information on what it is exactly that you're unhappy with. Now, I go through this every month, and I usually seem to use the same examples, but for those of you that haven't heard it, please do not come up and tell us why you don't like your neighbor, or that your neighbor has parties that keep you up till 3:00 a.m., or that their leaves blow into your yard in the fall, and that's why they shouldn't build a new garage. All that is not pertinent information. I will do this because it's really not necessary. The best and the most productive petitions, applications, that come to us are the ones where you have already spoken to your neighbor and/or neighbors and have explained what you're doing, what's it going to look like, and then they don't have any questions. And if they do have questions and concerns, and you can work it out before you come here, and it's quick, this is what I want, nobody's in opposition, it goes by the zoning rules, then that's great. But please, and when you're at the podium, you have to speak to us. There are some people that go to the podium and they speak to the audience. It's not the Academy Awards. You're here for our approval, not the audience. At that point, after opposition, if you want to come back, or your contractor or the attorney, you can come back to the podium, and you can explain some of their concerns, or maybe you can agree to disagree, whatever. And basically, that's how that works. If this was a full audience, I would then say, if there are six, or seven, or eight, or 25 people that want to speak in favor or in opposition, after like the first three, or four, or five people, you tend to say the same thing. So you could just come to the podium, state your name and address, I'm in favor, I'm in opposition, for all the reasons that were stated ahead of time. Do not talk from your seat. We have had, I say it every time, and every month, somebody decides that they forgot something, and they want to yell out something for their seat. Please don't do that. After all of that, we might have one or two extra questions. We take a vote. Not everything can be approved, and not everything is denied. If everything is approved in the city, there would be no need for us. And, you know, sometimes you just can't approve, so you have to deny, because you've just asked for way too much. We're a very fair board. We listen to everybody. We take everybody individually, and I think that we do a very good job on looking over everything, making our site visits, and making our decisions. So, that being said, there are a few other... Cell phone videotaping is not permitted without first notifying the commissioner of the zoning board. The commissioner must then announce videotaping is occurring. It may be in no way disruptive. These meetings are broadcast on Channel 9 and live on Facebook. All our meeting minutes are made public, and new applications, information, plot plans, renderings, et cetera, should be and need to be passed into the zoning board clerk, Mrs. McGrath, before the deadline, not the day of the meeting. So if you forgot that you have, I don't know what, something extra that you want to, that you have to pass in tonight, then you can't do it. Because we have to be able to look at it, and process it, and make do of it. The above-mentioned material cannot be accepted the night of the meeting, because all information pertaining to a variance application must be filed in the city clerk's office and be made available to the public before this scheduled meeting. All that being said, when we're all done, your decision will be typed and filed with the city clerk. Once the decision is filed with the city clerk, the 20-day appeal period begins. So if you're approved, you can't begin right away. You have to wait 20 days. And if you're denied, you still have to wait 20 days before you do anything, right? Whatever. I don't really mean whatever. I mean, yes. In compliance with the open meeting law, this hearing is also being recorded by our clerk. Please speak directly into the microphone clearly, and only speak when at the podium to ensure you are on the record. This evening, we are starting with number one, which is 10 and 1/2 Winter Street. Continued, so Attorney Kelty.
Well, good with having read the ad in previous meetings. My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney. I have offices at 40 Lowell Street in Peabody, Massachusetts. I'm representing Rudolfo Florencio, who is asking for variances to be allowed to build a two-family home in an R4 zoning district. This is a matter that had been before you something like a year ago. The expectation was, we may come back with a different proposal. We have come back with slightly different sized premises, a different design. We appear to have been able to work that out with both of our neighbors to the left and right. And we're asking for side yard area, lot frontage, side yard minimum build of a lot width, driveway width. We're asking for landscaping where four trees per 100 linear feet in site perimeter buffer is proposed. We're proposing no landscaping. This particular parcel had been used as a, almost like a contractor's yard. It turned out that because it was our four zoning district, it was not allowed to be used as an extension of any commercial use. Our neighbors to the right at one time were looking to utilize the premises, buy the premises, but they too would have been stymied in their use of the premises as commercial. So it is now empty. There is paving. If you are to consider allowing the variances that are before you this evening, the matter would need to go to the Conservation Commission for construction within the conservancy districts and protective elevations. There was a home here, that home that was on the property in the past, shows on our plan. We show the old footprint. We show our present footprint. We show that our parking for the two units, there would be garage under, and at the same time, there would be more parking available to the rear of the premises, where there is open space today. And we are happy to answer any questions that the board may have with respect to this proposal. Once again, it's a proposal to allow the construction of a two-family premises in a R4 zoning district. We are surrounded by twos, threes, even a four up the street, four-family residences. To our immediate right, it's all commercial. Across the street is all commercial. So we're of the opinion that our proposal this evening is not out of conformity with the zoning district. It is out of conformity inasmuch as we're not asking for multi-family. That is, we're not asking for a three or four family. We do believe that the lot is too small for a three or four family, but we do, we are of the opinion that we can adequately address our parking and other issues that are presented by the use of the premises as a two-family home, and we're happy to answer any questions that the board may have this evening.
Through the chair. Attorney Kelty, I know we talked about it last time, but I can't remember. What was the issue with that right-of-way? Is that something that belongs to the city, or is that going to a rear lot for Jose and Diana Mendoca? What was that again?
That is a right-of-way that is shared by the two properties upon which it is, but it is not to get to any residents of Mendoca, Mendoza.
Do your clients have to, would they use that to access parking in the rear, or is all the parking going to be underneath?
Parking will be underneath. However, we did want to be able to access the rear in case there was guest parking or some such thing as that.
Okay, and that right-of-way lets you do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Through the chair. Attorney Kelty, you mentioned that there are, you're surrounded by, or this subject property is surrounded by, two, three, and four-family homes. Do you know relative to the subject property, the size of the lots that these two, three, and four-family homes are? And are they more or less than, or similar size lots?
They're very similar size, however, I will say that our immediate butter, that lot, which is a three-family home, is slightly larger. We're 3,810 square feet. I believe that our immediate neighbor at number 10 gets a little closer to 5,000 square feet. And then we are on our right-hand side, that's commercial. And as we get further to our left, those lots are slightly larger, but not significantly or substantially larger.
Attorney Kelty, that there will be no green space at all? No trees, no nothing?
There is no proposal for green space. That's correct. If, when we get to the Conservation Commission, if the Conservation Commission were to require us or ask of us to place some greenery, rain garden, or some such thing, we could probably accommodate that, but the situation in particular down in this area is such that it's almost all paved today. Almost all of the areas are paved or gravelled, and there is little in the way of what I would suggest is planned greenery, but we would work with the Conservation Commission if they were to ask us to supply some.
Going before conservation? Why are you going before conservation?
We are in a floodway, and we are at an elevation which would require us to be filing with the Conservation Commission.
If you're in a floodway, perhaps you won't be able, so parking is going to be underneath? You're going to make an, what if you can't do that? How do you know you can do that?
It's, we're not digging down. We're not lowering the elevation. It's just that the second story, the first story of livable space will be above the grade of the first floor. In other words, there's no lowered basement. There's no, nothing below grade. Everything would be elevated above. So the garage would be at grade, and there would be no cellar, if you will.
You do realize that the required area for this is 34,500 square feet, and you're only proposing 3,810?
I'm painfully aware of that.
And you're cutting your driveway width by 10 feet?
Through the, go ahead. Through the chair?
Yeah.
Just, if I could, just not so much questions, but some observations from going down there to look. It's not like it's going to be injurious to the neighborhood. I mean, the neighborhood is what it is. It actually will fit right in pretty well with what's there. Looking at the table, there's really nothing you can do there by right. So there's, I don't know if there's anything you can do there by right.
There is nothing in terms of residential that could be done by right, given the fact that we are in an R4 zoning district, and this lot as it stands is significantly less. That's correct.
And just through, just through the observation to address Madam Chairman's concerns is, I don't know if there's a place where you could even plant a tree there, unless you dug up.
Well, you know, is...
Even if the conservation said you need to plant some trees, where would you put it?
Probably on that back lot line.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. Now, I did have some concerns the last time, and I think some of them were addressed. It's a two-family. It's hard for me not to say you can't put a two-family in an R4 district. You know, it's, unless you can, somebody can convince me that it's going to be, cause a real problem in the neighborhood, I don't really see where I have much of a problem with it, as long as it's just a two-family. I know I did ask for a single-family, but I guess that was kind of an unreasonable request. So a two-family, I think, fits in there. As much as it's hard to, with all the requests that you have, it's probably going to be the only property that didn't pre-exist zoning that I can think of, other than the new development across the street, that strip mall was probably, but of all the residential...
Which was all commercial.
Right.
Right.
And of all the residential, I'm sure...
And that side of the street is commercial. That side is commercial as it extends from Foster Street.
Right. But as far as the residential side, probably the reason you need all these, all this relief is because no one else did.
I don't think that the property ever, it seems very sort of unusual and somewhat disparate that this particular area is zoned R4. When we look at where R4 districts are in the rest of the city, they're up near to the tannery apartments, where we have multifamily, and where we have apartment buildings. And down in this particular area, we don't have any such thing. I think it's kind of anomaly that this particular area of the city would be zoned R4. Not a, there is not a conforming R4 lot anywhere down there.
Right. I have no questions. I appreciate being able to make the comments, and I'll be honest with you, I don't, unless somebody convinced me different, a two-family in an R4, I would have no problem with. Thank you.
I went today to look at this piece of property, this concrete slab, and I parked across the street, and I looked at it, and I got to tell you, I'm torn. Half of me says, agrees with Barry, and the other half of me looks at what you're giving us, what is required, and what you're asking. And I know you are painfully aware, but you are asking for quite a lot of dimensional relief. Now, I'm not saying that this wouldn't be a nice thing to build there, but this is really, really, really asking for quite a lot of dimensional relief. And no, not even one blade of grass, you're telling me, is, will be there. Are you, what'd you say? And you need to explain to me one more time about the parking.
Structure itself, the second and third floor are where the living units are, and the first floor is where garage space is. And because in the particular floodplain district we're at, you cannot have residential use with, on that first floor, such as like the, you know, the tannery condominiums on Lowell Street as we head from here on the right-hand side. Those garages are all unable to be occupied because they are in a floodway, floodplain. And as such, that's how those particular properties are treated. The other thing that I wanted to add was that even if we were to be back here asking for a single-family home, the single-family home is likely to be asking for virtually the exact same relief that we're asking for for the two.
I just have a comment through the chair, before we open it up to the audience for people who are here in favor and against, but I just want to know, can we, if we were to vote on this tonight, move to approve, could we condition the landscaping, or does that not within our purview? Because I would be more inclined to vote yes if they have to have some grass in the backyard. Because I just think, if it's going to be a two-family house, it ought to have, even if it's a small, you know, a small backyard, especially if the parking's going to be underneath the house, they're not going to need the whole thing to be on a concrete slab. And I think it would, it would be nice if some of those houses next door were to have a little, little backyard, too.
We've done it before, but I think we've done it before when it was like tree requirements or shrub requirements. I don't remember us having to do it, I mean, I like the idea, I just don't remember us doing it before for like creating a green space.
For trees per 100 linear, that's required.
Right, but that's just trees. I mean, we can condition it upon that. I don't know what, what CONCOM would have to say, or...
I would have no objection to such a condition, saying that we should be trying to get some green space and green area and landscaping approved by the CONCOM. And so we could bring that to the Conservation Commission and see if they would approve it.
Okay.
Because there is room.
Yeah. Yeah, I think if, I think we perfectly go outside of that then, if council's willing to do it.
How many park, is there enough room for four cars?
Yes.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? Anybody in the audience to speak in opposition? Well, that's amazing.
Motion to close the public hearing. Motion to approve?
I'll take a crack at it. Motion to approve, subject to the condition that the counsel for the applicant will present the Conservation Commission with a plan for green space and trees, which will then be subject to the Conservation Commission approval. Yes.
Yes.
And does pass. You're all set, wherever you are.
Thank you, members.
Number two.
Notice hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 22nd, 7:00 p.m., in the Honitorium City Hall. 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of American Construction Corp., care of attorney Jack Kelty, for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2017 as amended Section 9.3, as it applies to the premises known as Three Mile Pleasant Drive, Peabody, map 29 Lot 6. This petitioner seeks a variance to allow for a 12-foot wide two-way driveway where 20 feet are required. The property is located in a B.R. zoning district. The application and plot plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the city clerk's office and board of appeals office, City Hall, in advance and prior to the public hearing. The application and plot plan will also be available at the time of the public hearing.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney. I have offices at 40 Lowell Street in Peabody, Massachusetts. This is a matter that has been before this board, at least as recently as last month. We received a group of variances, and it was discovered after I had applied for that set of variances for the structure itself. It was discovered that the driveway, which is located on the right-hand side of the property, was 12 feet, and that we have somewhat recently adopted a provision that said that, states that driveways should be 20 feet. We would ordinarily design a driveway that would probably go around the entire premises. On our left side or southerly side of the premises, we have a water course in the rear of the premises. We have also some marshy wetland-type areas. We've been approved by the Conservation Commission for this particular building that was before you last month, and it once again is before you this evening. We were completely approved for that. We do have an order of conditions that we'll issue from the Conservation Commission, and we are also pleased to announce that there was, there were some neighbors that wanted some trees replaced, and we have recently gained permission from Chase Properties in Ohio, concern that owns the mall to our rear, that they would allow us to plant some trees and shrubs in an area that they own, but it would provide the kind of screening that the neighborhood would like to see. Our existing driveway on this premises is 10 feet wide. We're going to improve it to 12 feet. It'll be an access egress that will take you from Mount Pleasant to the rear of the premises, to the parking that's located there, but because of the presence of our water course on the left-hand or southerly side, we can't take that driveway and send it all the way around the building. So we're seeking a variance from this board, which would allow us to have a 12-foot driveway and rather than 20, and that's the nature of the variance we're seeking. And that will be the plan that will be presented to the planning board and to the construction review committee, and we'll await their responses. Thank you.
Well, I do have to say, I've driven by, and although I can't see too much, because it's sort of petitioned off, I'm very, very happy that somebody is taking construction, whatever, and redoing this whole piece. So I think this is fine with me. Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition? Hearing none of matters before the board...
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? You're all set.
Thank you, members.
Three.
Notice hereby given that the Board of Appeals, City of Peabody, will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 22nd, 7:00 p.m., in the Honitorium City Hall, 24 Lowell public hearing on Monday, April 22nd, 7:00 PM, in Auditorium City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, on the application of Brian Bowe and Stacy Sarno for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2017, as amended section 7.2, as it applies to the premises known as 1 Randall Road, PBD, map 18, lot 17. Petitioner seeks a variance to allow for a garage and requires relief from left-side yard where 20 feet are required and 15.6 feet are proposed. The property is located in R1 zoning district. The application and plot plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the City Clerk's Office and Board of Appeals Office, City Hall, in advance and prior to the public hearing. And the application and plot plan will also be available at the time of the public hearing.
My name is Brian Bowe, 1 Randall Road.
Hello, my name's Stacy Sarno, 1 Randall Road.
Proposal is to build a 15 by 25, secret leave from required setbacks of the side yard, lot 20, setback to 15.6.
It's to build a garage.
Just explain a little bit about the hardship that you wrote here. It's a little hard to understand.
Well, anywhere on the lot, if we were to put the garage, we wouldn't meet the required setback. And if we were to try to put it in the front yard, the front yard does slope, so that's the best area on the left side of the house to put it. And that's where our existing driveway is, as is.
Is this just going to be a garage or are there going to be living space in it as well?
No, just a garage. It won't be finished or anything.
It won't be finished. And it won't be access to the house, it's just going to be from outside.
Okay.
Is that a single-car garage?
Yeah, just a single, small.
Okay. And what's the style of the house? Is it a multi-level?
Just a campanelli.
Ranch.
It's a ranch?
Yeah, just an extent off the...
Will the roof line of the garage match the roof line of the house? It's not going to be any taller or shorter?
Nope, just the same.
All the same?
Yeah, just going out.
Okay. And it will be attached to the house, but you're not going to have access? There won't be a door to go?
No, I have a side door to the garage, but a separate entrance to the garage.
Because it's our bedrooms are there, so we don't want to have a door there to the garage.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition? Hearing none of matters before the board?
Motion to close the public hearing? Motion to approve?
All in favor? Any opposed? You're all set?
Thank you.
Say thank you.
Thank you.
Number four is withdrawn. Do you want to read that?
Sure. Item number four on tonight's agenda. 1 Jacob Street, PBD, has been withdrawn. I'm going to read an email to Mrs. McGrath. "I am speaking for the homeowners of 1 Jacob Street. They request to withdraw their application for a variance on the property without prejudice. If you need any information, please feel free to contact me at a phone number and through this email. Thank you for your time." And that's from Amanda Breen of Breen Construction Services out of Lynn. So motion to accept the withdrawal? Number five, notice hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of PBD will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 22nd, 7:00 PM, in Auditorium City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, on the application of Sean and Karen McHugh for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2018, as amended section 7.2, as it applies to the premises known as 11 Driscoll Street, PBD, map 76, lot 300. Petitioner seeks a variance to allow for a garage and requires relief to the front yard setback where 5 feet are required and 1 and 1/2 feet are proposed. Right-side yard where 5 feet are required and 3.2 feet are proposed. Lot coverage where 30% is permitted and 37.1% is proposed. This property is located in R1A zoning district. The application and plot plan are available to the public and can also be viewed at the City Clerk's Office and Board of Appeals Office, in advance and prior to the public hearing and also at the time of the public hearing.
I'm Sean McHugh, 11 Driscoll Street, PBD, Mass. My wife Karen. And we're looking to build a two-car garage and we're looking for relief on the rear from required is 5 feet. And we're looking for 1 and 1/2. Right-side required 5 feet, 3.2 is proposed and the lot coverage of 30%, we're going
Comments, questions? Anybody in the audience to speak in favor?
There are actually letters.
Oh, three letters. Okay, let's, I don't know if I got those letters.
There are three letters that were submitted in support of this project. The owner of 8 Davis Terrace, the owner of 13 Driscoll, and the owner of 9 Driscoll. And basically, they all say that they are direct butters. They've seen the plans and they're not in opposition. Let me just double-check if that's what all three of them say.
And sir, you are which neighbor?
I'm the 9 Driscoll Street.
For the record, 9 Driscoll Street neighbor wrote a letter, but is also here in person to speak in favor?
In favor, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
See how easy that is?
Michael Powers? Okay, thank you.
Anybody in opposition? We heard the in-favors. Hearing none of matters before the board.
Motion to close the public hearing? Motion to approve?
In favor? Any opposed? All set?
Thank you.
Six is 251 Andover Street.
Notice hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of PBD will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 22nd, 7:00 PM, in Auditorium City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, on the application of 251 Andover Street LLC. Care of attorney John Kelty for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2018, as amended section 7.2 and 10.5, as it applies to the premises known as 251 Andover Street, PBD, map 29, lot 14. This petitioner seeks a variance to construct a building and requires relief to the front yard setback where 50 feet are required and 12 feet are proposed. The side yard where 40 feet are required and 2 feet are proposed. The rear yard where 50 feet are required and 46.1 feet are proposed. And landscaping is set forth in section 10.5.3. Property is located in a BR zoning district. The application and plan are also available to the public and can be viewed at the City Clerk's Office and Board of Appeals Office, City Hall, in advance and prior to the public hearing and also at the time of the public hearing.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is John Kelty. I am an attorney. I have offices at 40 Lowell Street here in PBD, Massachusetts. I am appearing before you this evening on behalf of 251 Andover Street LLC. The owners of the property are the Arena family, who are located, they are the owners also of Middlesex Glass, and they operate a successful business at Shoshine Street in Tewksbury, Massachusetts. I'm seeking relief from three aspects of the zoning ordinance. If you recall, I want to say I was here four years ago for the building immediately adjacent to this, which would be 253, 255 Andover Street. That was another extremely similar circumstance in which we took the existing building at that time, tore it down. At the time, it was a residence-like structure. And we were able to seek variances from this board and were given them and built the building that you see there today, which is a glass and stone structure, which seems to fit 114 very nicely. And we are now proposing to build a sister facility, which would be almost identical to it, which would be where the former, as my application states, used to be a subway. It's on the corner of Gates Road and Andover Street. And we're seeking almost an identical set of variances so that we can set it back with the street scape that would be, we would be set back exactly the same amount as the building at 255 is. And we would develop the property in conjunction with each other. In other words, because we are able to, because we own, although in different LLCs, but the family owns both properties, we're able to devote cross easements so that we can develop them as almost one entity. With regard to, I think it's very straightforward, the variances that we've asked for with respect to front yard, rear yard, and left-side yard. However, our landscaping variance, we are intending to supply you with a plan that is the plan we've submitted already for site plan review on sheet... On sheet three and... Sheet two and three and four of that particular plan, which is not the plan you have before you this evening, this was submitted for site plan review. We show a number of landscape areas. And if you look at the plan that is before you this evening, we show landscape areas that are in the front of the building, to the right on Gates Road. We also show landscape area to the left of the building where there is some, there's a sidewalk on the left-hand side of the building and we're proposing a landscape strip out there. I think the most confusing aspect of any plan we filed is that it shows the trees that are at the rear of the premises. Those are actually on our property, but they are beyond. There is a line that shows on the plans before you that is the end of our pavement as it sits today. We are intending to go back closer to the property line. And many of those trees, such as the quad birch, the quad birch, the maple, those are located, those that can remain will remain. However, there are a couple of those trees that are very definitely located in our new parking area, so they're going to have to come down. And I think that this plan is somewhat misleading to the extent that it's a little unclear, unless you look carefully at it, what's going to happen with those trees. And I'm suggesting to you that several of those trees will come down. So I would file the site plan with you this evening so that the landscape areas show. And my suggestion is that because we are still in a status of site plan review with the Public Services Department and with the Building Department and other departments here in the city, and the principal discussion regarding that particular filing that we've made is how we're going to utilize our entrance way from Gates Road. We have a meeting at 9 o'clock on Thursday morning in which we're going to discuss whether or not we need to make that first, where we say entry only from Gates Road, down in the lower right-hand corner. There's been some discussion about reversing that and making that exit only. And the access egress would be further up to the rear of the premises. So my suggestion would be that perhaps the board grant our variances, suggest that there is an acceptance of the landscaping shown on the site plan I'm going to file with you, but then at the same time, leave that final landscaping decision up to either the Community Development Department or with the Site Plan Review, Construction Review Committee, so that whatever we finally decide to do with regard to landscape gets coordinated with the traffic pattern. So that areas where the landscaping that we're proposing can remain, will remain, and then anywhere that it needs to be adjusted, we'll have to supply that, the Site Plan Review Committees with a modified construction plan, a landscape plan, other than the one you're seeing this evening.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? Big audience tonight. In opposition? Hearing none of matters before the board.
Motion to close the public hearing? Motion to approve? Attorney Kelty wants to condition that or just make a suggestion?
No, I don't mind a condition.
Okay. So we'll make a motion to approve with the condition that attorney Kelty will provide us with his site plan review landscaping plan tonight and that he will continue to work in conjunction with other the city departments to accomplish that landscaping, to the extent possible.
And then maybe add that the final determination of landscaping would be left to that group?
Yes, and the final determination will be left to that group.
Any opposed? All set? Number seven, 70 North End Street.
Notice hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of PBD will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 22nd, 7:00 PM, in Auditorium City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, on the application of Mark Maldonca for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2018, as amended section 7.2, as it applies to the premises known as 70 North End Street, PBD, Mass., map 76, lot 145. Petitioner seeks a variance to allow for a garage and requires relief to rear yard setback where 35 feet are required and 33 feet are proposed. Right-side yard where 15 feet are required and 11 feet are proposed. Left-side yard where 15 feet are required and 8 feet are proposed. Lot coverage where 30% is permitted and 32% is proposed. The property is located in R1A zoning district. The application and plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the City Clerk's Office, Board of Appeals Office, City Hall, in advance and prior to the public hearing and at the time of the public hearing.
Hi, I'm Mark Maldonca, 70 North End Street. We are trying to build an addition. I don't know why it says garage, but it's an addition. It's just going to be three bedrooms.
It's going to the rear of your property?
Yep, existing off the rear, yes.
Is it going to follow the roof line? Is it going to be higher, lower?
About, about two feet higher, just because the existing roof that's there now, it has two dormers. So if we kind of went with it, it kind of almost looked like an old barn. So we're going up two more feet just to make it look more presentable.
So do you have to knock down walls in the existing house or put a door there?
No, ma'am. What's on the second floor right now is actually a bedroom and a half. That's why the house is kind of small, we're making it a little bigger. That one bedroom will have a door entering to the new addition on the second floor, which would be the master bedroom, then two bedrooms underneath. So there's no exterior walls being removed or just an actual door being added.
How high did you say?
About two feet.
Two feet.
Yes. And that just has to do, like I said, the house right now has two dormers on it, half dormers, so it would just look structurally cuter.
Through the chair if I could, please. On your application, it's proposed for two bedrooms, 10 by 12 bedrooms, growing family. But then you said three. How many bedrooms are there going to be?
There's going to be three.
Three, all of them, 10 by 12?
No, sir. So it's 18 by 12. So it's 18 by 30. And so downstairs, there's going to be the two bedrooms. And then upstairs, there's going to be the master bedroom.
Okay.
Then the room that exists now, which is my son's bedroom.
It's just going to be like a playroom?
It's just going to be a neutral room for the kids.
Okay. No, I know the, I know the house. I grew up on Calcutta.
Oh, okay.
It needs to be a little big.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a little small.
No. We're just concerned with... Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition? Hearing none of the matters before the board.
Motion to approve. Close the public hearing.
Second. Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck.
Thank you very much.
And number eight, which is 25 Blackstone.
Notice hereby given that the Board of Appeals, City of PBD, will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 22nd, 7:00 p.m. We'll get auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street PBD on the application of Gary and Margaret Muse, Wheeze, Muse, for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2018 as amended section 7.2 as it applies to the premises known as 25 Blackstone Street, PBD, map 5, Lot 27. Petitioner seeks a variance to allow for an addition and requires relief to the rear yard setback where 35 feet are required and 25 and a half feet are proposed. This property is located in our 1 zoning district. The application and plot plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the City Clerk's Office and Board of Appeals' Office, City Hall in advance and prior to the public hearing and at the time of the public hearing.
Hello, Gary and Margaret Muse. We live at 25 Blackstone Street. It's our primary residency and it's our 1 zoning. We have an existing deck in our backyard, which we obtained a variance back in 1993. And the deck is old. It needs to be replaced. And we'd like to replace it with a three-season porch, which would be 16 by 16. It would just give us, right now with the old deck, we have limited use of the deck, so it'd just give us a little more room.
It says here a garage under?
Yes.
You have a garage under your house?
Yes, yeah. It's a, it's a three-bedroom split with a garage underneath.
No, 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 you drive, it's a driveway.
Yeah, you drive, yeah, yeah.
West PBD has a garage like underneath the house. Who wants to speak in favor? In opposition? Hearing none of the matters before the board.
Motion to close. Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck.
Thank you.
And 10 Butternut, Attorney Von Zalitis.
Last but not least, notice hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of PBD will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 22nd, 7:00 p.m. We'll get auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street PBD on the application of Young and Sage Pike. Care of Attorney Von Zalitis for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2018 as amended section 7.2 as it applies to the premises known as 10 Butternut Ave, PBD, map 56, Lot 24. Petitioner seeks a variance to allow for a garage and requires relief to the rear yard setback where 35 feet are required, 14.8 plus or minus feet are proposed. Left side yard where 20 feet are required, five plus or minus feet are proposed. Lot coverage where 25% is permitted and 29% is proposed. This property is located in our 1 zoning district. Application and plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the City Clerk's Office, Board of Appeals' Office in advance and prior to the public hearing and at the time of the public hearing.
Good evening, for the record. My name is Ethan Von Zalitis. I'm an attorney practicing law at 246 Andover Street in PBD. And I'm here in behalf of the petitioners with respect to their variance request. The petition is for a young married couple. Ms. Pike had immigrated to the United States from Korea with her parents and her brother back when she was only six years old. At that time, she had an aunt that took in their entire family and housed them and fed them for several years until they learned our language and they were able to become self-employed. Her aunt's now in her 80s. She's unmarried, doesn't have any children. And due to her age, she has experienced a lot of mobility issues. It would certainly be a great benefit to her if she can live with the petitioners. The petitioners' existing dwelling is a one-story slab of ranch. It's surrounded by one- and two-story dwellings. And they desire to return that kindness that Iran had showed them many years ago by constructing an approximately 1,400 square foot addition in their home for the benefit of their aunt. But due to the size and configuration of the existing dwelling, it's impossible really to construct any meaningful addition to the home without some form of variance relief creating a hardship to the petitioners. The addition is being proposed as two stories. The lower level will contain a bedroom, a full bathroom, a laundry room, a common family room, along with a one-car garage. Because it's a slab ranch, it obviously doesn't have any storage for personal items, so they'll use the second story as attic space. The entire left side yard is currently paved as a driveway, so that the addition won't require any additional impervious coverage in that area. The petitioners will also remove their in-ground pool and the associated concrete patio, and they'll replace that with additional lawn area. In addition, the dwellings to the rear that are on Mulberry Drive, they're at a higher elevation in the petitioners' property, so the addition won't adversely affect those abutters. And all I believe the finished product would be in keeping with what you see in the surrounding neighborhood. It can be done without adverse effect to our abutters. In fact, the petitioners reviewed this proposal with the two abutters that would be the most impacted, and I believe they've issued a letter in support of the variance request. I do have Mr. and Mrs. Pike here with me this evening, and together we'll try to answer any questions that the board may have. I don't think I've ever been here without any people in the audience.
I have walked by and driven by this house, I would say at least 20 times in the last couple of weeks, because we walk the dog at the end of, at the reservoir. And at first, I had some reservations about this, because the existing dwelling is quite extensive, and it takes up an enormous, already enormous amount of your yard. But, all things being said, the property is quite hidden. You know, you have a lot of fencing. I'm a little concerned about the height. The height is going to, this addition is going to be higher than the existing house then?
Yes, but if you notice, the abutter on the left, I believe, is a two-story dwelling.
You know, Ethan, I really don't care about the abutter on the left.
Oh, I know. But we're staying within the height limitations and it being, you know the area. It's a good mix of single and two-story.
And thinking about it, you know, I really don't have any, any issues with this. I do have to say, though, I think at this point, you should be all done with adding
And I will say that, you know, I do take into consideration what other houses have done. And, you know, Attorney Von Zalitis is correct. I mean, just next door to this house, they've got a two-story addition that clearly was allowed. I mean, I think consistency is important. You know, if everything was a slab ranch on that street, then I would suggest that this is not in conformity with the neighborhood. But I think it would fit okay, and I'm inclined to vote in favor of it.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition? Hearing none of the matters before the board. Call vote.
Dan?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
You are all set, yes.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. You had night items on the agenda. And what time is it? Eight o'clock? You've got to be kidding.
Motion to approve the minutes? Motion to adjourn?